Come on, people.
Gaveling at you, Mr. Warner.
(laughing). I'm here.
Yeah.
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 Sure.
Hi.
How are you?
Hi.
It's amazing how many pages we're generating.
All right, friend. Amazing. All right. There we go. Good evening and welcome to the September 9th, 2025 special meeting of the City of Summit Planning Board. My name is Stephen Spur and I have the privilege of serving as chairman of this august body. If you'll please rise, we will begin first with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice, and law.
Okay. In accordance with New Jersey Statute 10:4-10, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to newspapers of record and has been posted here in City Hall. For the benefit of the interested public, this meeting is being livestreamed to the city's YouTube page and also broadcast on Summit's government channel, which is Comcast Channel 34 and Verizon Channel 30. Any hearings on applications for development in this meeting are quasi-judicial proceedings. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues that are relevant to what the board may legally consider, and reaching a decision in decorum appropriate to a judicial proceeding must be maintained at all times. Please note that fire exits are to my right, your left, and at the back of the room where you entered. The city has a listening system to assist the hearing impaired. If anyone needs hearing assistance, please obtain the necessary equipment here at the dais and return it immediately after our meeting. Ms. Sands, will you please call the role of the members?
Chairman Spur?
Here.
Vice Chair Bolson Alvarez is excused. Mayor Fagan?
Here.
Councilmember Hamlet?
Here.
Ms. Bowen?
Yes.
Mr. Dalmaso?
Here.
Mr. Felment is excused. Mr. LeJoy?
Here.
Mr. Sala?
Here.
Mr. Stern is excused. You have a quorum, you may proceed.
Excellent. And I would just note that our vice chair couldn't join us as unfortunately she had an unexpected loss in her family, and we express certainly our condolences to the entire Bolson Alvarez family. With that, Mr. Warner, sitting to my right, is the planning board's attorney. Mr. Warner will advise board members on matters of law and serves as a key interface with each applicant's attorney. Mr. Warner will not vote on any applications or matters considered formally before this board. Ms. Sands, to Mr. Warner's right, is a city employee and the planning board secretary. Ms. Sands assists applicants in preparing their applications, planning our agendas, and keeping our meeting minutes. Ms. Sands also does not vote on the applications or other matters formally considered by this board. Also present is a repeat offender, Mr. Tom Behrens from Burgess Associates. He is representing us, the board, today as our planner, so we're grateful to have him. And you'll meet a number of other folks as we move through our agenda this evening. I'll skip the application page and a half or so of procedure only because this evening being a special meeting, you would expect there to be some special items included. There are no typical land use applications. What we'll be addressing this evening are three matters, and the agenda's been updated as these matters have come into clarification over, you know, these past couple of weeks. The first section, under new business, is our Morris-Brod's Crossroads Rezoning Consistency Review. You're familiar with this. It's been discussed at the governing body, it's been discussed here, it's included in our Housing Element and Fair Share Plan, so nothing new there. So that'll be the first item we want to address. The second is our Historic Preservation Ordinance Amendment to DRO Chapter 35. There's a consistency review here. These two items are grouped under new business as there is no public comment offered for consideration of those two items. The public comment is offered at the second reading of the governing body. The governing body had introduced each of those items, they sent it to us to opine upon, and then we send it back to them with our reflections, and that's where the public comment is intended to be captured. And then third is the public hearing on Tatlock Field Lighting Project Courtesy Review. That is noted under public hearings, while not a traditional land use application as most folks are familiar with it. That is, we'll have a public comment section, so we'll make sure to carve out time necessary for the public to share their thoughts on what's shared this evening. Before we jump into Morris-Brod's Crossroads, the Housing Element and Fair Share Plan is top of mind in the community, not just because it's a heated election season, but because once every 10 years, we have the opportunity to look forward as to how affordable housing will be incorporated in our community. So it's the intent of this planning board has been for now many, many months, as well as the governing board, to continue to engage the public on information as it becomes available. This process will really pick up speed as we head into the end of the year. So thankfully, we have this meeting today. We had a governing body meeting on the 3rd where Council President McTiernan and others shared an update, and we'll have another planning board meeting on the 29th this month. So you're welcome always to attend here. It's our intent to provide you updates in this forum, but there's also a wonderful landuse@cityofsummit.org email that you're welcome to direct questions, comments to. And what we do, what really the city staff does, is collects those questions or comments, shares them with the board professionals, so that we can anticipate and address those as part of these meetings. What I wanted to start with is a statement prepared by the city's Affordable Housing Attorney in consultation with the other professionals to address some of the concerns, some of the questions that had arisen, so we hope that this provides some additional clarity, and if you'll bear with me, I'll read it mostly straight through. I want to pause at one section just to elaborate a little bit, no riffing. If I start to riff, give me a nudge, but I want to just be as complete as we can in answering these concerns. The, and quoting, "The March 2024 Amendments to the Fair Housing Act created the program, which is governed by the Administrative Office of the Courts, AOC. In order to participate in the program, the City of Summit, like every municipality in the state, had to file a declaratory judgment complaint by the end of January 2025. This is the only lawsuit filed related to the city's current affordable housing plan, and it is filed by the city. It's a lawsuit because the Fair Housing Act created such a scheme, and in order to participate, a lawsuit had to be filed. In accordance with the requirements of the FHA amendments and the rules created by the AOC, anyone seeking to challenge the city's affordable housing plan had to submit a challenge by filing their challenge on E-quarts no later than August 31st, 2025. Those challenges had to be filed in the docket that the city created in January. By the deadline, so this was the filing deadline for objections, the city received three challenges, and Council President McTiernan referenced these on the September 3rd meeting. One was from Fair Share Housing, which filed, who filed 400-plus challenges throughout the state. For reference, 416 municipalities applied to the program by filing a complaint in January. And two developers, Russo Development and Klein Capital, were the three challenges." And this is where I'll step out of Ms. Holmes' comments, just to refresh and remind everyone with regard to those challenges. Fair Share Housing is a affordable housing advocacy group in the state, and as you can see, has a broad-based approach and position that runs counter to the vast majority of municipalities, so that will play out as it is. What I did want to remind folks on, and if you haven't already printed up a copy or referenced it regularly, we have the Housing Element and Fair Share Plan that was adopted and endorsed at the end of June, first here at the planning board, then at the governing body. In the Housing Element and Fair Share Plan, we identify rejected development sites, for which there were three. Two of the challengers, surprise, surprise, align with those rejected development sites. I will read just a brief excerpt, just to remind folks what the decision of the planning board and the governing body in consultation with the public and professionals were, just to help remind folks what we said no to, where we drew a line for the purpose of preparing the plan. The first objective that I'd reference is Russo Capital, or Russo Development, rather. This is referred to in the Housing Element and Fair Share Plan as Onyx and Russo Development. This was contemplated as a 198-unit inclusionary multifamily development, which would include four stories of residential units above the existing two-level parking deck, resulting in a proposed building height of at least five stories. The building would have a floor area ratio of 151% and density of 45 dwelling units per acre. So you can read the full description certainly when you reference the Housing Element and Fair Share Plan. The second developer objector was Incline Capital. That was, that was, is a development contemplated at the corner of Broad Street and Summit Avenue, very near Mayby Playground and the Village Green, the Summit Train Station. That's described in the Housing Element Plan as a development to accommodate an eight-story, eight-story, 300-unit mixed-use development on a 1.46-acre tract. The proposed density for that development was submitted at 250.5 dwelling units per acre, nearly 100% building and impervious coverage, and a floor area ratio of approximately 650%. So those were two developments that, again, the planning board, governing body, others in consultation decided were not appropriate for inclusion in the plan. So just to keep folks familiar, these are the, these are two of the counterparties to the mediation that's coming. So let me pick up a little bit back in my Nancy Holm voice, just to complete her thoughts. While Fair Share and the developers have challenged the city's plan, that doesn't mean that they are correct in their arguments, or they have even stated the facts correctly. The challengers have merely filed their issues with the city's plan by the statutory deadline and requested any and all relief that would be legally advantageous to their position, nothing more, nothing less. In any legal proceeding, every party lists any and all relief they want. It does not mean that such relief is appropriate or will be granted. To be clear, there are no additional lawsuits against the city related to its affordable housing plan that have been filed. Challenges have been received in the normal course of the program's procedure, and that is all. As we have seen since the deadline has passed, challenges have been filed across the state by the deadline is the rule and not the exception. Because challenges were filed, the program now moves the city and challengers into the mediation process outlined in the statute and AOC rules. Unfortunately, because the city will be in mediation, the process will be largely confidential for a period of time, as any information can be publicly shared, the planning board and/or council will share that information. We'll publish this statement to the city's website, in case you didn't follow entirely, with my reading of it. We hope that addresses a number of questions, concerns, that residents have had about the process, where we stand in the process. I can tell you, in terms of mediation, meeting scheduling is underway. That process has begun with great haste, and the intention per the statute is all mediation, all question on these plans will be resolved by the end of the year. So lucky, lucky, special adjudicators and the program judges, thank you for your service, but we'll have a busy couple of weeks and months certainly ahead of us here.
Is it okay if I ask a question?
Yeah, please.
I'm a slow learner, so I've been reading all over the internet today that the City of Summit has received three lawsuits. I just want to break it down. Okay, let's take it very slow. Okay, so let's talk about challenges versus lawsuits. So we just heard from our chair, the advice from our Affordable Housing Trust Fund Attorney, Nancy Holm. And just for a matter of record, for round three, this council is receiving immunity because we did scatter site projects. This council, right? So I want to explain to the public the difference between a lawsuit and a challenge, and I know, Steve, you did a great job explaining it, but I want to be very clear. I think it needs to be repeated a little bit. Go ahead, Mr. Warner.
Oh, no, no. Did you want to repeat?
Yeah, I think it's important, right? Because, because...
No, he's just ready to jump in.
Yeah, I think, I think it's important for the public to understand what is a lawsuit and what is a challenge, because on January 31st, we had to file, right? We had to file.
Right. All municipalities, I'm not the Affordable Housing Council, but I am elsewhere, and I am the planning board council, and as our chairman stated, and as our councilwoman is stating right now, yes, virtually all municipalities, in order to, any municipality that wanted to participate in the program, needed to institute that participation by way of filing a declaratory complaint, and so it is the city that initiated the lawsuit as required in order to participate in the program. Our lawsuit, one and only lawsuit.
Right, so that initial, January 31st, just to break it down, anybody who challenges us gets in that docket, or whatever the lawyers call it, you get in that docket. That doesn't mean we have three lawsuits, okay? Now, I didn't go to Harvard, I didn't go to law school, an Army Transportation Officer, but that's as basic as it is, right? That's it.
Only one.
Right? Only one.
And the city filed it.
Right? I didn't go to Harvard, didn't go to Georgetown, didn't go to Ivy League school. I just want the public to understand, and I want to dispel the rumor that there are three lawsuits out for the city. It's simply not true, it's not good for the city, and it needs to stop. Thank you.
Excellent. So again, as I referenced early on, as you have questions, concerns, our elected officials are always available. They welcome your emails, telephone calls, texts, please reach out to them. They're wonderful and tremendously responsive, and if you want to direct any questions to the planning board, landuse@cityofsummit.org is a wonderful place to send those, and we will be sure to address those in the meetings, in FAQs, we'll find a way that's necessary to keep the public informed. So with that, we have a Housing Element and Fair Share Plan that we adopted, that was endorsed, that we are proceeding to act upon, and the first step, or one of the first steps in that process, is addressing the Morris-Brod's Crossroads rezoning. This is the first item of business here, our formal agenda. It constitutes a consistency review? Yes, please.
As part of our Fair Share Housing Plan, we referenced this project, Ashwood Road, Ashwood, Ashwood Road. Can you just lay out the fact that so far there are no approvals, there are no...
Sure. You're referring to the Harmon Holdings project?
Yes. And speak briefly about what "as of right" construction means in that context for a portion of that project?
Sure. I'll be happy to defer that question. I don't know if Tom, or maybe Augusto's the better person to speak to kind of where that stands, as a brief, just as a brief...
Yeah, I could, sorry. If I may, before we go further, though, for confirmation, that is not any, is that an aspect of our fourth round Housing Element and Fair Share Plan?
It is.
Because, yeah, because just to keep in mind that it is a pending litigation, and there are challenges within the one and only lawsuit that we filed as a city, as we were required to do in order to participate in the program, but it is an ongoing pending litigation, so we should be circumspect in what we say. We want to be as transparent as possible, but in the context of litigation, one cannot be completely transparent because one is subject to attorney-client privilege, litigation privileges, because I think they say it on TV sometimes, anything you say can and will be held against you in a court of law. So...
Aren't you a wet blanket, Mr. Warner?
Can I ask one question, Mr. Warner?
But, so leave it to the attorney to be the wet blanket, as always.
Can I just ask one question? So can, can Tom give a little bit about the history of this, as far as technical review process, how long it's been sitting with the City of Summit? I think it was 2023, I can't remember. It's not like this just came four months ago.
I think historical information is fine, and frankly, I know Mr. Behrens well, and I know, I trust his judgment as to what can be shared and what can't be, or shouldn't be, for purposes of protecting the city and its residents in the context of a pending litigation. So that, that gives you the, the yellow light, Mr. Behrens.
The yellow light.
Proceed slowly with caution, in the best interest of the city and its residents.
All right. So fair enough, I think I can offer a few clarifying comments, how about that? So I think the first question pertained to process, so where are we in the process, and how can this site actually be developed? So what the fourth round legislation required is that housing plans had to include draft, draft ordinances for any site that included, or that, any site that required rezoning as a plan mechanism to address a portion of a municipality's affordable housing obligation. So the city's fourth round housing plan that was adopted in June of this year includes a draft ordinance for the Harmon Holdings site. The city is actively working with that developer to finalize the details of that ordinance, so it's nothing set in stone at this point. What we can confirm are the details that are included in the housing plan, that it will be a mixed-use development with no more than 20 total residential units. So I think one term that I hear is that this is an affordable housing project. It's actually a mixed-use project with inclusionary residential housing with up, at least four affordable units, so...
And just for explanation, for benefit of the public, exclusionary, excuse me, inclusionary means that there are market rate units together with a component that is affordable units, correct?
That's right, that's right. And so the legislation requires that municipalities finalize these rezonings no later than March 2026, so we believe we're on the right trajectory to have that happen. Once the ordinance is in place, the prospective developer would be required to submit a complete site plan application to the planning board. And so both at the ordinance implementation phase, as well as the site plan review phase, will be opportunities for the public to review the details of the ordinance. Again, it's not complete, fully complete at this point. That means the same thing, I understand.
...contemplated at the corner of Broad Street and Summit Avenue, very near Mayby Playground and the Village Green, the Summit Train Station. That's described in the Housing Element Plan as a development to accommodate an eight-story, eight-story, 300-unit mixed-use development on a 1.46-acre tract. The proposed density for that development was submitted at 250.5 dwelling units per acre, nearly 100% building and impervious coverage, and a floor-area ratio of approximately 650%. So those were two developments that, again, the Planning Board, governing body, others in consultation, decided were not appropriate for inclusion in the plan. So just to keep folks familiar, these are the, these are two of the counterparties to the mediation that's coming. So let me pick up a little bit back in my Nancy Holm voice, just to complete her thoughts. While fair share and the developers have challenged the city's plan, that doesn't mean that they are correct in their arguments or they have even stated the facts correctly. The challengers have merely filed their issues with the city's plan by the statutory deadline and requested any and all relief that would be legally advantageous to their position, nothing more, nothing less. In any legal proceeding, every party lists and lists any and all relief they want. It does not mean that such relief is appropriate or will be granted. To be clear, there are no additional lawsuits against the city related to its affordable housing plan that have been filed. Challenges have been received in the normal course of the program's procedure, and that is all. As we have seen since the deadline has passed, challenges have been filed across the state by the deadline is the rule and not the exception. Because challenges were filed, the program now moves the city and challengers into the mediation process outlined in the statute and AOC rules. Unfortunately, because the city will be in mediation, the process will large, will be largely confidential for a period of time, as any information can be publicly shared. The Planning Board and/or council will share that information. We'll publish this statement to the city's website, in case you didn't follow entirely, with my reading of it. We hope that addresses a number of questions, concerns, that residents have had about the process, where we stand in the process. I can tell you, in terms of mediation, meeting scheduling is underway. That process has begun with great haste, and the intention per the statute is all mediation, all question on these plans will be resolved by the end of the year. So lucky, lucky special adjudicators and the program judges, thank you for your service. But we'll have a busy couple of weeks and months certainly ahead of us here.
Is it okay if I ask a question?
Yeah, please.
I'm a slow learner, so I've been reading all over the internet today that the City of Summit has received three lawsuits. I just want to break it down. Okay, let's take it very slow. Okay, so let's talk about challenges versus lawsuits. So we just heard from our chair, the advice from our Affordable Housing Trust Fund Attorney, Nancy Holm. And just for a matter of record, for round three, this council is receiving immunity because we did scatter site projects. This council, right? So I want to explain to the public the difference between a lawsuit and a challenge. And I know, Steve, you did a great job explaining it, but I want to be very clear. I think it needs to be repeated a little bit. Go ahead, Mr. Warner.
Oh, did you want to repeat?
Yeah, I think it's important, right? Because, because...
He's just ready to jump in.
Yeah, I think, I think it's important for the public to understand what is a lawsuit and what is a challenge. Because on, on January 31st, we had to file, right? We had to file.
Right. All municipalities, I'm not the Affordable Housing Council, but I am elsewhere, and I am the Planning Board Council. And as our chairman stated, and as our councilwoman is stating right now, yes, virtually all municipalities challenge, in order to, any municipality that wanted to participate in the program needed to institute that participation by way of filing a declaratory complaint. And so it is the city that initiated the lawsuit as required in order to participate in the program. Our lawsuit, one and only lawsuit.
Right, so that initial, January 31st, just to break it down, anybody who challenges us gets in that docket, or whatever the lawyers call it, you get in that docket. That doesn't mean we have three lawsuits, okay? Now, I didn't go to Harvard, I didn't go to law school, an Army Transportation Officer, but that's as basic as it is, right? That's it.
Only one.
Right? Only one.
And the city filed it.
Right? I didn't go to Harvard, didn't go to Georgetown, didn't go to Ivy League school. I just want the public to understand, and I want to dispel the rumor that there are three lawsuits out for the city. It's simply not true, it's not good for the city, and it needs to stop. Thank you.
Excellent. So again, as I referenced early on, as you have questions, concerns, our elected officials are always available. They welcome your emails, telephone calls, texts, please reach out to them. They're wonderful and tremendously responsive. And if you want to direct any questions to the Planning Board, landuse@cityofsummit.org is a wonderful place to send those, and we will be sure to address those in the meetings and FAQs. We'll find a way that's necessary to keep the public informed. So with that, we have a Housing Element Fair Share Plan that we adopted, that was endorsed, that we are proceeding to act upon. And the first step, or one of the first steps in that process, is addressing the Morris-Broad Crossroads rezoning. This is the first item of business here on formal agenda. It constitutes a consistency review? Yes, please.
As part of our fair share housing plan, we referenced this project, Ashwood Road, Ashwood Road. Can you just lay out the fact that so far there are no approvals, there are no...
Sure. You're referring to the Harmon Holdings project?
Yes. And speak briefly about what as-of-right construction means in that context for a portion of that project?
Sure. I'll be happy to defer that question. I don't know if Tom or maybe Augusto is the better person to speak to kind of where that stands as a brief, just as a brief...
Yeah, I could, sorry.
If I may, before we go further, though, for confirmation, that is not any, is that an aspect of our fourth round Housing Element Fair Share Plan?
It is.
It's a mechanism.
Yeah, because just to keep in mind that it is a pending litigation, and there are challenges within the one and only lawsuit that we filed as a city, as we were required to do in order to participate in the program, but it is an ongoing pending litigation.
I know people are disappointed.
We should be circumspect in what we say. We want to be as transparent as possible, but in the context of litigation, one cannot be completely transparent because one is subject to attorney-client privilege, litigation privileges, because I think they say it on TV sometimes, anything you say can and will be held against you in a court of law. So...
Aren't you a wet blanket, Mr. Warner?
Can I ask one question, Mr. Warner?
So leave it to the attorney to be the wet blanket, as always.
Can I just ask one question? So can, can Tom give a little bit about the history of this, as far as technical review process, how long it's been sitting with the City of Summit? I think it was 2023, I can't remember. It's not like this just came four months ago.
I think historical information is fine, and frankly, I know Mr. Behrens well, and I know, I trust his judgment as to what can be shared and what can't be or shouldn't be for purposes of protecting the city and its residents in the context of a pending litigation. So that, that gives you the, the yellow light, Mr. Behrens. Proceed slowly with caution, in the best interest of the city and its residents.
All right. So fair enough, I think I can offer a few clarifying comments, how about that? So I think the first question pertained to process, so where are we in the process? And how can this site actually be developed? So what the fourth round legislation required is that housing plans had to include draft, draft ordinances for any site that included, or that, any site that required rezoning as, as a plan mechanism to address a portion of a municipality's affordable housing obligation. So the city's fourth round housing plan that was adopted in June of this year includes a draft ordinance for the Harmon Holdings site. The city is actively working with that developer to finalize the details of that ordinance, so it's, nothing's set in stone at this point. What we can confirm are the details that are included in the housing plan, that it, that it will be a mixed-use development with no more than 20 total residential units. So I think one term that I hear is that this is an affordable housing project. It's actually a mixed-use project with inclusionary residential housing with up, at least four affordable units, so...
And just for explanation, for benefit of the public, exclusionary, excuse me, inclusionary means that there are market rate units together with a component that, that is affordable units, correct?
That's right, that's right. And so the legislation requires that municipalities finalize these rezonings no later than March 2026. So we believe we're on the right trajectory to have that happen. Once the ordinance is in place, the prospective developer would be required to submit a complete site plan application to the Planning Board. And so both at the ordinance implementation phase, as well as the site plan review phase, will be opportunities for the public to review the details of the ordinance. Again, it's not complete, fully complete at this point. That means the same thing, I understand. And also review at the Planning Board, again, to really look at the, the site plans, the architectural plans, and understand what impacts, if any, there will be. And the Planning Board, as it always does, will look for ways to refine the project in the best interest of the city.
That's pretty good, Steve.
As far as procedural history, again, this was a developer's proposal. This was not Summit looking for sites. The developer came to the city even before the fourth round legislation came to be, which was in March 2024, which is when the Fair Housing Act was amended, had come to the city informally proposing an idea of redeveloping the site. These three parcels in question, which have frontages on Ashwood Avenue, I think it is, right? Broad Street, Morris Avenue, right? It's, it's about .7 acres in size, got about an L-shaped configuration. And their original proposal was for a 33-unit all-residential development. And over time, that evolved into the zoning framework that's included in the housing plan. And yeah, this took, I don't know, about two years, at least, three years?
Yeah, I think more, like three, I think. When we talk about 33, 100% residential, I want everybody to understand that that had zero setbacks, right?
Well, it was a much bigger building, more intense development.
Right, right.
And, and so, you know, discussions evolved to the extent that the, the city thought the first proposal made no sense, you know, it was just too big. And then over time, that version of the plan had been whittled down. But there were also months in between of radio silence, where we were waiting four or six months for the, for the developer, excuse me, the developer to come up with the next iteration of the plan. Then there'd be back and forth, and it really didn't get to the point of being able to be presented to the public until it was featured in the plan, and it was brought in, into greater conformance with the city's zoning. And at this point, it is very much consistent with the underlying or existing NB, Neighborhood Business Zone designation, except for a few, what I call, minor deviations. Hence, it was put in the plan where you heard from the Planning Board Chairman, the projects that were rejected, for, from my perspective, obvious reasons, being somewhat out of scale. And I think this is where I'll stop, so I don't get, go too far.
If I may, though, that the obligate, the obligation of the municipality, as with all municipalities in the Housing Element Fair Share Plan, was to explain why sites were included, as well as why the sites that were excluded were excluded. So the city did its job, did its job right. And as I understand it, and then frankly, as I was witnessing it, our chair, when he explained about two projects that were excluded, that are challengers in the, in the program challenging the plan within our one lawsuit that we brought, the, he was reading verbatim from the language in the Housing Element Fair Share Plan as to why they were excluded, not sharing anything beyond the plan, and hence not staying within the parameters of the litigation privilege. This is information that's publicly available.
There you go. So when you get a chance, take a read, I think it's only 196 pages.
Light reading.
Light reading, that's right. But available for the public to review. And again, as you have questions, comments, landuse@cityofsummit.org. Jessica is who you're going to be probably connecting with. So thank you, Jessica. All right, I'm going to slightly close that can of worms, leave a little bit of a crack because we're actually operating still within the Housing Element Fair Share Plan. So we have Morris-Broad Crossroads rezoning consistency review. Perhaps, Steve, I'll ask you, though, just to set the stage for this. What is the, what's the purpose of a consistency review? What is the Planning Board opining on this evening? And then we're going to hear a little bit from, from Mr. Behrens as to the details of what we're considering this evening.
Certainly, as the, as the board is well versed, having done this many times with any zoning land use ordinance, as the chair mentioned earlier, the process as required under the municipal land use law is that after the ordinance is introduced by the governing body, there is a referral to this body, the Planning Board, as the gatekeepers of the master plan, as I like to refer to us, to review that ordinance to ensure it is at least not inconsistent, double negative, with the master plan. And the board can share other recommendations even beyond the inconsistency or consistency of the proposed, or I should say, the introduced ordinance, its consistency with the master plan, albeit the primary job of the Planning Board is, is it not inconsistent, or is it inconsistent with the master plan? We hear from our planner, it is not a public hearing. There is a public hearing in the process. That happens later on, after this review and referral of the report of the Planning Board back to the governing body, our common council. They will then, I presume, on second reading, prior to the adoption of the ordinance, if it is to be adopted, will have a public hearing, as is required under the municipal land use law, at that period of time. So in short, there is a public hearing, it's not tonight, it's at the, at the common council before a different body on a different night, when they have second reading and adopt, excuse me, public hearing on the adoption. So that's probably a good segue to turn it over with the chair's permission to Tom Behrens, our planner, to provide our board with a professional opinion as to whether or not the proposed, excuse me, the introduced ordinance is not inconsistent with the master plan and why.
We need to do swear or no swear?
Well, you know what? We'll do it.
Let's do it.
It's not a public hearing, not necessarily required, you're qualified, you're accepted by the board, no doubt, because you're our planner, but please raise your right hand, do you swear to God or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you. If anybody ever wants to be sworn in, I'm happy to swear. So I'll never say no.
All right, Tom, to you.
Thanks, Steve. All right, well, thank you for that introduction, Mr. Warner. Just to provide a brief, a brief background of the ordinance, in June 2024, the city created the existing Morris-Broad Crossroads, also known as the MBC overlay, overlay zone, to replace the prior Broad Street West redevelopment plan for Block 2706, lots 1, 2, 3, and 4. These four parcels include the old firehouse site, the existing Chestnut parking lot, an office building, and privately-owned Finger Lot, which is Lot 2. The total tract comprises a land area of about 1.5 acres, and the site has frontages on, excuse me, on Broad Street, Morris Avenue, and Cedar Street. The existing overlay zone created a new mixed-use zoning framework for the site, which established permitted uses and development requirements based on years of community input. And the overlay zone was designed to achieve several community goals as a result of that input, including, one, to repurpose the site, given the known relocation of the fire department; two, to generate revenue from the sale of the property to a prospective developer and generate annual tax revenue; three, to satisfy a portion of the city's affordable housing obligation; four, to maintain existing public parking and for the adjacent St. Teresa's Memorial Hall, as the Chestnut parking lot currently provides; and then finally, to develop the site in a unified design theme that's consistent with the character of Summit and complements surrounding land uses. So the current ordinance was introduced by the common council on September 3rd of this year, that's ordinance number 12144, which is intended to repeal the existing Morris-Broad Crossroads overlay zone, to be replaced with a new MBC zone designation for the same four parcels in question. The new MBC zone is being implemented for two primary reasons, the first being to adjust the bulk criteria or dimensional requirements to account for the land swap with the owners of Lot 2. And the purpose of this is so the city can control the entirety of the tract. So just to give a brief explanation on that, three of the four parcels in this tract are owned by the city, and one is currently owned by Lot 2, that's what's been known as the Finger Lot. And that Lot 2 is associated with the adjacent Funeral Home and has provided parking for that Funeral Home since, based on a prior land use board approval that goes back several decades, is my understanding. And so in order for the city to retain control of this parcel in particular, which bisects the property without it, it was important to work out a deal essentially with the owner of Lot 2, similar to what had been contemplated in prior deals with, with that particular property owner. And that's been resolved with the council. We believe that'll be completed in short order, and again, the city will be able to control the entire parcel. But the land swap included conveying a portion of the existing tract to Lot 5, which is the Funeral Home parcel. It's about 2,900 square feet, which reduced the land area of the total tract. So again, we had to adjust some of the bulk criteria to accommodate that minor reduction in land area. And finally, the second primary purpose was to modify this zone from an overlay zone to an actual zone, which will strip away the underlying B-zone designation and, and make this MBC zoning the only possible developable zoning framework that a prospective developer can utilize. The new MBC zone is intended to keep the original vision and zoning framework of the overlay zone. Again, we're really talking about a few, what I would describe as minor tweaks, that will stay true to the intention of the original ordinance, again, based on lots of public input. Just to give a summary of the ordinance modifications, they include slight, slight tweaks to the density and FAR, to really get back to the original development yield. So, meaning just slight upward ticks in the residential density and slight upward tick in the floor-area ratio, just to get back to the maximum 48 residential units that were originally contemplated, just to get back to the approximately 80,000 square feet, that would be the maximum floor-area yield. So again, nothing's changed in that regard, other than the land area of the site has been reduced by a, a small amount. We provided some clarification, word choices in the ordinance that we thought could just be cleaned up. We've provided greater flexibility with the parking requirements, and we've adjusted the three-story height requirement to allow for an office building, meaning that office floor, office floor building plates require 14-foot heights from floor to ceiling. And one of the possible development scenarios is that the site may include an office building, and to allow for that, we'd have to allow for these 14-foot floor-to-ceiling heights. So the three-story height allowance has been increased to 42 feet, which we believe is reasonable, and it's also less than the maximum height requirement currently allowed, which is 46 feet, being increased to 48 feet in the zone. As Mr. Warner mentioned, the purpose of the Planning Board's involvement in this is to identify any inconsistencies of the proposed ordinance with the city's master, adopted master plan documents, and offer any recommendations for the governing body to consider. To begin that review, I would note that the site is specifically included in the city's 2025 Housing Element Fair Share Plan, which is a plan mechanism to address a portion of the city's affordable housing obligation. As I mentioned earlier, this zoning is very similar in many ways, identical in many ways, to the existing overlay zone that was previously deemed to be consistent with the, the city's master plan by the board just about a year ago. And in addition, we reviewed several of the city's relevant master plan documents, including the 2000 master plan, the 2015 downtown improvement plan, and 2016 reexamination report. I've included the, the specific relevant sections of the master plan in my memo dated September 6th. I don't think it's necessary to read all of those, they're part of the record, but I'll just give an overview of the general master plan themes, which I believe are relevant, and not just not inconsistent, but that are consistent with the proposed ordinance modifications. These include consideration that this, this particular site is a gateway to the downtown and serves as a transition between surrounding neighborhoods and the CRBD. The master plan in general encourages a balanced development pattern, which we believe this ordinance achieves with its mixed-use configuration, and just the promotion of mixed-use development in this area of the city is, is another goal of the master plan. The master plan encourages residential densities and development at appropriate scales and densities. We believe that's achieved with this ordinance. And finally, we believe this will be a significant aesthetic enhancement to the site, which the master plan also promotes. So without further ado, I will turn it over to the board for any questions or deliberations. I'll note that I, I did not find any inconsistencies in my review, but the board is welcome to offer any.
Mr. Warner, any thoughts to complete?
That was good enough, thanks.
Questions first from the board, before we perhaps opine on consistency or inconsistency or not inconsistency. Peter, any thoughts? Or questions, I should say?
Peter, your microphone.
Sorry, you looked deep in thought there, so I'm sure it was about Morris-Broad Crossroads.
The thought I had is by adopting the ordinance, in addition to the development reasons, is that this assures that the affordable units that are constructed will be counted towards the city's obligation. And I think that's very important.
Important to know, and, and so process-wise, where we, this is one of the final steps so that the city can go out to sell this at public bid in the near future, that's our expectation.
Excellent.
I have a question.
Yes.
Can you just give us in broad strokes what the land swap is and what property of the Funeral Home the city will be taking on?
It's actually the opposite, where existing Lot 2 is what's been considered the Finger Lot. It's the only privately-owned parcel in the tract. And as part of the negotiations, in order for the Funeral Home to retain its existing parking count in accordance with its prior zoning board approval, the city is conducting a, a lot line adjustment, is really what it, what it is, to give 2,900 square feet at the rear of Lot 2 to be conveyed to Lot 5, which is the Funeral Home parcel, so that they can maintain their existing parking.
Okay.
And it squares off the lot, it actually works out better in some ways.
Okay. Any other questions? PJ, Augusto, you guys are good? Okay, perhaps invite the...
I think this is great news, right? This is, we're finally getting these properties up for sale. This is what the residents fought for. This is, this should be the headline tomorrow, right? Residents banded together to stop the Broad Street West Monstrosity, and now here we are, and the properties are going up for sale, right? That's supposed to be the headline tomorrow.
Okay.
So great job, yeah, a couple more steps, but, yeah.
Maybe just for the sake of the record, and to utilize a little bit more of Tom's good work in preparing the board, I do, would want to draw attention to some specific callouts from the master plan, a master plan reexamination that particularly compelled me to believe that this ordinance as proposed is not inconsistent with our master plan. With regard to the 2000 master plan, I found particularly compelling referencing that document to balance growth and development opportunities, which establish a pattern of development in existing infrastructure. So we think about where this, this configuration of lots sits within our, our downtown center. I think it is absolutely prime for growth and development, and this is a very responsible way with which to move forward with private developers advancing any construction, but reflecting very serious and deep reflection by the community on what they want to see occur there. Further within the 2000 master plan, to support upgrading of substandard properties, the old, what is now the old Firehouse, I think could fairly be considered substandard, referencing the 2000 master plan is to code enforcement efforts, education, ordinance amendments, and other initiatives. So there's been great discussion about whether or not those tracts of land today are fully utilized to their potential. And I would argue that the current utilization, shuttered old Firehouse, is not the highest and best use for those lands. And then on a, again, on a general basis, encouraging and promoting economic development and revitalization, this is a poster child for new investment, new investment that's guided by what the, what the municipality, its residents especially, see as most viable, but also responding to what the market is interested in actually seeing development, developed. Further to that, in the 2016 master plan revision and reexamination, there's reference to guiding development to maintain and enhance the character of Summit, building economic resiliency by supporting reinvestments, zoning changes that strive to maintain and strengthen an appropriate transition between residential neighborhoods and downtown commercial zones, and building economic resiliency by supporting reinvestments. I think we can see this as a positive step forward, I won't go so far as to write headlines for local publications, but a positive step forward towards achieving these goals. And, you know, I'm for one very proud of the work that our governing body has done, that the residents of Summit have done, to help guide everyone that has a stake in the success of that site's development, see where it is today. So I'll add that really just for the record, thank you, Tom, for giving me all those wonderful words. Steve, anything else you want to clarify?
If the board's done, then it's time for the board to decide whether there'll be a motion to find the ordinance is not inconsistent with the master plan or otherwise, and a second and a roll call vote.
Any further comments?
And we will prepare the appropriate resolution to constitute the report back to the governing body of this planning board's findings.
Wonderful. Any further comments from the board? All right, hearing none, do we have a motion to find this ordinance not inconsistent with the master plan?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Jessica, a roll call, if you will.
Chairman Spur?
Yes.
Mayor Fagan?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamlet?
Yes.
Ms. Bowen?
Yes.
Mr. Dolmazo?
Yes.
Mr. LaJoy?
Yes.
Mr. Sala?
Yes.
Okay, it passes then unanimously. Congratulations, fans of the Morris-Broad Crossroads rezoning consistency. You'll see this next at a future governing body meeting where this consistent, the findings of this consistency review will be shared and taken and considered. the findings of this consistency review will be shared and taken into consideration along with public comment as to the appropriateness of approving that ordinance. Next, under new business is Historic Preservation Ordinance Consistency Review. So this takes us out of the Housing Element and Fair Share Plan for but a brief moment. This follows the same procedural, same procedure as was described for the immediately preceding consistency review. So I'm going to pitch it to Mr. Tom Barron just to set the stage, and we'll summarily discuss the merits of this proposed ordinance.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you suggested, the common council introduced ordinance 12049 on September 3rd of this year to repeal the city's existing Historic Preservation Commission section of the revised general ordinances, to be replaced with a new Historic Preservation Ordinance that will be located in Chapter 35 Development Regulations, excuse me, Development Regulations. So, by way of background, since at least 2019, when the city adopted its first iteration of the new Development Regulations ordinance, it was always contemplated that a new Historic Preservation section of the code would be located in Chapter 35. Took a little time to play out, you know, to resolve some of the details of that specific ordinance. COVID happened in between, so we finally got to the point where there is a, an ordinance that everybody seems to agree upon, puts things on the right track for the city to preserve historic landmarks and sites in accordance with the master plan, as I'll get to momentarily. The new ordinance maintains the Historic Preservation Commission's advisory status, which I think is an important point, so that they'll continue as they have in the past to be able to offer advice and recommendations, but not, will not necessarily be approving anything, issuing certificates of appropriateness or denying developments or anything like that. So they'll continue to be resources for the planning board, for the zoning board, for the common council, to provide public education, and now they'll have the opportunity to review and comment on certain types of building permits for relevant types of improvements to buildings and structures that are deemed to have historic value. The review that the HPC will be conducting is generally limited to the exterior buildings, and really where these structures can be seen from the street or the front. So the HPC isn't so much concerned with somebody building a deck in their rear yard. It's about maintaining the historic fabric of properties in Summit, as can be observed by the public primarily, and by adjacent properties. The HPC, again, is a resource that will provide education. They'll be able to review applications for demolition to perhaps discourage the demolitions of historic buildings, as well as the removal of the aspects of historic buildings. So for instance, if somebody has a certain facade treatment or architectural elements, they can educate that homeowner about alternatives. There is a document entitled the 2004 Historic Preservation Design Guidelines, which is pretty thorough and talks about how homeowners and different property owners can improve their property in a way that's historically sensitive and within the character of their architectural type that the building has. It offered that the ordinance also has some new administrative procedures and requirements to guide the HPC's review of these different types of applications. And the ordinance does finally designate historic sites and districts that are identified in the city's 2000 Historic Preservation Element of the master plan. I'll get to those in just a moment. But I'll note that, again, the, this ordinance does not reduce the ability of anyone to improve their lot or property in any way, or strip anyone of their development rights. Again, it just, it simply maintains the Historic Preservation Commission's ability to offer advice and recommendations for relevant types of development, and formalizes, or formally recognizes, these historic sites and districts that exist in Summit, and some of which have been identified since the 80s and are referenced in the 2000 master plan. And again, the HPC will continue to serve as a resource for the board. So as the board's task, we've heard previously, is to review the extent to which the ordinance is, has any inconsistencies with the master plan. I'll refer to our memorandum dated September 6th, which is offered to guide the board in its review. It includes a number of relevant master plan provisions, mostly from the 2000 master plan, which includes a Historic Preservation Plan element that the city adopted as part of that effort in 2000. Again, without reading all of those goals and objectives, I will note that the Historic Preservation Plan element recognizes the list of landmarks in 12 districts that are included in this ordinance, which, again, were identified as early as the 1980s as being historically significant. The master plan recommends the designation of these districts and what were then 44 historic sites, but has been reduced to a lower number given the demolition of some of those structures. The recommendations also include review and comment of building permit applications by the HPC, and it also suggests that the HPC should continue to function in an advisory capacity, which it will do. So, in consideration of all that's included in our review, I would offer that this ordinance is very much consistent with the city's master plan, that the master plan actually tees up this ordinance. That's the way the process is supposed to work, master plan, then ordinance. And in my review, I did not identify any inconsistencies with the master plan. And I did look, just, it's not something generic that I say. We did take a look and could not find anything.
Thank you, Tom. Questions from the board from Mr. Barron? No questions?
Good. Go ahead, please, Peter. Mr. Barron, isn't it correct that one of the reasons for this is that we've had circumstances where applications for demolition permits were just granted while we put a lot of effort into scrutinizing expansions and extensions and additions, demolition permits were just granted as of right, and properties were just torn down before there was any input from anyone? Is that correct?
That's right. So if somebody was demolishing a historically significant building or structure, there would be nothing that would trigger the need for HPC review, and that's what this does. Because if it was as of right in accordance with the ordinance, it was lawful for them to do so, didn't require any review or approval from the planning board or zoning board. So this will create an opportunity for the HPC to review and give its input in those cases.
Just a quick question. Would this, how would this have changed? Now, I know when we talk about the Morris, sorry, the Ashwood project, the Harmon Holdings, if this would have been in place at that time, would it have given us any more opportunity to not knock down that house, that historic home? I can't remember if it was completely historic or not, but would it have changed that reality at all?
I'm not sure that it would. First of all, I'm not sure it's within one of the designated districts.
It might not be, right?
Well, it may not be. And let's say that it was.
Yeah, let's say it was.
At this point, again, the HPC's role would be advisory. I think they could have talked to that homeowner. They would have given them options, you know, there are available grant options for historic preservation. But they might have also looked at the structure of the home, and in some cases, just because the home is old, it doesn't render it worth preserving. So, you know, I didn't walk through that building. I didn't know what it looked like. It could have been that it was time to be redeveloped.
Yeah, for sure.
And that, you know, wood frame structures don't last forever. I'll say that much. So, I don't think it would have prevented it. I think that's the right answer.
Yeah. And again, I know this doesn't really give, it's just more of an advisory, but...
It's a step in the right direction.
Right.
But the 100 years slows the process down, right?
Right.
Well, it creates a clear threshold. So one of the questions is always, well, what's deemed historic? So now we have a list of specific landmarks and designated districts, and we have that threshold date of 100 years from whenever the reviews occur. So we know exactly what it means to be historic, which would trigger the need for HPC review.
I was just going to comment on sort of the impetus and duration, the length of time it took to sort of get to this point. I think Augusta could probably speak to it a little bit as well. It's been pretty thoughtful, and I think, to Tom's point, it's not to say you can't do with your property what you ultimately wish, but it's an opportunity for the Historic Preservation Commission to say, or to say, hey, there might be an alternative here. You moved here, and I think a lot of us moved here because of the character. We talk about the character of Summit a lot, and so I think this is, this is a move to kind of preserve, preserve that character. So I just, I think that's, you know, it's important to kind of have that context and understand that it's not, it's not to say you may not demolish, but perhaps you could think about it a different way. Perhaps you could use some of the, maintain some of the facade. Perhaps you could, you know, there are alternatives. So I think that's, that's the idea behind it.
Well said.
Can you speak to other municipalities that have perhaps gone further than what is contemplated here, and what in practice that has meant? Because this has been characterized as an incremental step, as a balanced approach, respects property ownership rights while encouraging education of historic preservation, but you can go further. So maybe you can speak to what you know of those experiences.
One of the reasons this had taken so long to finalize was because there were discussions of what the HPC's role should be and responsibilities and power should be, frankly. And so municipalities in New Jersey run the gamut from not regulating historic preservation at all to all but picking out the curtains and the rugs. And so I think the city was reluctant to go the curtains and rugs approach, and found this, this sort of middle-of-the-road approach, which, again, is informative, slows down demolitions, and is a step in the right direction.
Yeah. I'm encouraged by this ordinance, not just because our esteemed vice chair is a former member of the HPC, or my wife was a former member of the HPC, if she's watching this evening, but because HPC members are among the most passionate volunteers we have in our city. When they ascend to this august body, they make themselves known, and they really leave a positive impact. So what I like about this ordinance is it maintains HPC's advisory status, gives them an opportunity to really, you know, share their knowledge, their passion for historic preservation. The review is limited, but less limited, more focused, I think, to help address a fundamental question for which neighbors may be seeking clarification. Is that historic? And the same thing for the homeowners, is that valuable for us to invest in preserving? But really, if anything, raises awareness and educates stakeholders. The question that Councilwoman Hamlet raised to the Ashwood property is, sadly, like that property or others that may fall within certain historic districts is, we'll never have had that opportunity to done, to do the research, to have on the record whether or not those properties were in fact historic, available and able for preservation. So this, if anything, really sets a standard moving forward that we want to learn, we want to kind of improve our standing around historic preservation. And as Councilman Palowski referenced in his introduction of this ordinance on the 3rd of this month, it's intended as a pilot of sorts. We have been laboring behind the scenes to get it exactly right. Sorry to break the news, it's probably not perfect, but we, as residents, members of the city administration, elected officials, others, will all have the opportunity to continue to suggest further refinement over time. So it's a wonderful first step, and I'm grateful for all the hard work that's gone into it. And for all of those reasons, feel it is not inconsistent with Summit's master plan. Anyone else like to add anything?
Just two quick things. I would say first, I would like to say thank you to Augusta and his staff. They have been amazing. Augusta has more on his plate than probably any human being in the city. And I will tell you, he, we went back to the drawing board specifically because of him and his staff. We didn't want to create more of a burden for them. We value his opinion, his professional advice. And I think, Augusta, I didn't ask you this before the move, but I think we've got you there.
We'll see how he votes, right?
We'll see how you vote. But I just want to take a moment to truly thank Augusta and his team for, you know, for trying new things. And the second thing I would say is, I lived at 89 Ken Place a long time ago, and as a new homeowner, I didn't know what to do with the house. It's old, it's historic, but he had maintained it amazingly. But it was tough. It had a tiny backyard, not a tiny backyard, a tiny living room. But what this also does is, it gives families an opportunity to engage with our Historic Preservation Committee. We've got, you know, typically, we've got some architects on there. We've got some people with some really good ideas. So we want to give them an opportunity to say, hey, maybe, maybe you don't want to knock this down. It's, it's more of sort of a, hey, this is, you've got this at your, at your fingertips here. Maybe you want to take another look at it. Maybe you want to keep the front of it. Or, you know, so I think it's an opportunity for the public to become educated. We're not taking any property rights away, because that'll be the headline tomorrow. I know it.
You got to stop writing headlines.
Yeah, I know. I just know what I already, I know what they're going to be. But I just want to thank, my main goal is to thank Augusta and thank you, Tom, for spending the last two years on this, I think. And thank Caroline King, who's been so passionate about this as well, and Bob Palowski.
It's worth maybe just pointing out as well, in terms of the burden that comes with this, $50, I believe, is the fee associated with it.
It's an administrative review fee.
Administrative review fee. And the time with which, you may be, Tom, speak to that, the time with which the HPC needs to respond.
I believe they first, within a short amount of time, have to determine whether or not it qualifies for HPC review. That might be a two-week period?
So, just to get it right.
Oh, Augusta.
So the first step is for the HPC to determine whether they want to review your property. And they have a period of seven days to respond in the affirmative or the negative. If they respond in the affirmative, that they will be conducting a review. There is a period of 30 calendar days for any resident to receive their review signed and completed with all the content that they have prepared to educate you on your property. And I do want to stress the fact that this is an advisory and educational document on your property that provides just an opportunity for you to maybe preserve your historic home. This is not, it wouldn't be an approval. It's not a denial either. But those are the periods you can expect reasonably.
Excellent. Any other comments before we entertain a motion? Okay, thank you, Augusta. Thank you, Tom. With that, I'll ask for a motion to find this proposed ordinance not inconsistent with Summit's master plan.
So moved.
For the second?
Why do we say that?
And a roll call if you could, Jessica.
Chairman Spur?
Yes.
Mayor Fagan?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamlet?
Yes.
Ms. Bowen?
Yes.
Mr. Dalmaso?
Yes.
Mr. LaJoy?
Yes.
Mr. Sala?
Yes. All right. Thank you very much. And I'll note, for fans of Morris Broad Crossroads rezoning and Historic Preservation Ordinance, you will have the good fortune to hear the second, to have the second hearing, so the second reading of this, where public comment will be solicited, at the next governing body meeting on the 16th of September. Amazing. All right. With that, we've been sitting for about an hour. Let's maybe just take a quick five-minute recess, stretch our legs, and then we're going to come back for Tatlock Field Lighting Project courtesy reviews.
going to come back for Tatlock Field Lighting Project Courtesy Review. [applause] A couple more members filter in, and then we will begin again. All right. Welcome to the public hearing portion of our evening. Within this public hearing portion is the Tatlock Field Lighting Project Courtesy Review. We will speak to the scope of this. Steve's going to share a little bit about what in fact is in front of the board. Tom Behrens will speak a little bit, provide a little more detailed context as to how we should think of answering that question. And then we have a number of members of city staff here who are generously sharing their evening with us that are available to answer questions. So maybe, Steve, I'll invite you to just talk a little bit about courtesy review. And then, it's my understanding that there is an attorney present representing an objecting party. Everyone's welcome at the planning board. We welcome you this evening. And we're going to allow you to address the board with some of your preliminary concerns, which Mr. Warner and others this evening will help us resolve together. So just a little bit on the courtesy review, and then we'll invite Mr. Simon forward.
Certainly. I'll start out by saying, this is similar but different to what we were doing previously. The master plan consistency is involved in the process, but this is under a different municipal land use law provision. This is Section 31A of the Municipal Land Use Law, which authorizes the planning board to conduct a master plan review and courtesy review of projects such as this. It's my understanding this is a city-owned and land and city project that is coming before us. The MLU law at 31A stipulates, provides that whenever the planning board shall have adopted any portion of the master plan, which we of course have, the governing body or other public agency having jurisdiction over the subject matter, that would be this planning board, over this matter, before taking action necessitating the expenditure of any public funds, I'm sorry, that was the governing body, before the governing body expends any public funds incidental to the location, character, or extent of such project, they must refer, shall must refer, the matter involving such specific project to the planning board for review and recommendation in conjunction with such master plan, and shall not act thereon without such recommendation or until 45 days have elapsed. So we get that 45-day referral period, as it's referred to, to weigh in via the courtesy review process. So we do allow for questions and comments from the public, including any potential objectors through their counsel, the questions at least through their counsel, in that process. So that's essentially the process. With the chair's permission, it's my understanding that we do have counsel for an objector who may have, may wish to weigh in on potentially jurisdiction and/or other matters. To the extent jurisdiction may be something he wishes to weigh in, jurisdiction is a predicate matter. So it would be appropriate, in my opinion, for us to hear what he has to say with respect, at least to jurisdiction initially, so that we can resolve that. Given that it's predicate, it should be at the beginning, not at the end. So with the chair's permission, we can hear from counsel.
Simon, come forward, introduce yourself, the party you're representing, and Steve, yes, a bit of a preview perhaps of what we'll hear, but your words.
I figured. First of all, of course, ladies and gentlemen of the board, good evening. I'm always good to be here before the planning board in the City of Summit. My name is Rob Simon. I'm an attorney with Harold Law. I'm here on behalf of Tatlock Community Preservation Association, a New Jersey nonprofit corporation. And my understanding is that the matter before us, or before you this evening, as was announced, was a public hearing on the Tatlock Field as a courtesy review. As Steve, the chair, Mr. Spur pointed out, I do want to, and I feel it's the right thing to do, and my obligation to do it, is to, at the onset, identify certain issues strictly pertaining to jurisdiction of the board to conduct this public hearing. Certainly, I have other comments. I have a professional planning witness, look forward to participating in the process that the process proceeds tonight. But I feel constrained to raise some issues on behalf of my client, just so that it's out there. And as I told Mr. Warner before the hearing, I didn't want to just sort of sit on my hands and you do your thing, just to find out that I have all these questions, and you say, why didn't you get up, you know, way back when? So as Mr. Warner appropriately pointed out to you, this is a courtesy, or at least identified as a courtesy review hearing, presumptively pursuant to Section 31 of the Municipal Land Use Law. So, under the Municipal Land Use Law, a couple of things to note, that first of all, that not only does Section 31 apply to this proceeding, but also Section 10 of the Municipal Land Use Law applies, which covers public hearings. And not only are applications for development public hearings, not only are master plan hearings, public hearings, but courtesy reviews are identified in the Municipal Land Use Law under Section 10 as public hearings. What does that mean? That means that adherents to all the things that are required for a public hearing need to happen. Now, under Section 12 of the Municipal Land Use Law, there are provisions for public notice for certain types of development applications, for master plan amendments, and the like. Courtesy review hearings do not fall under the rubric of Section 12 of the Municipal Land Use Law, meaning that the City of Summit, I will contest, does not have to send out any public notice within 200 feet to neighbors for a duly constituted Section 31 public hearing. However, there does need to be public notice of this hearing, because it is a public hearing. And that then relates to the need to comply with what's called the Open Public Meetings Act, Section 10, colon, 4, dash, 8 of the New Jersey statutes, which deals with adequate notice for even, for any type of public hearing. There's a couple of things you need to do. First of all, if you're having a special meeting like you are having, that you need to ensure that you're providing notice to newspapers at least 48 hours prior, et cetera. I'm not sure, and some of my comments are not necessarily accusatory, it's that, you know, you always want to get it right, right? Mr. Warner, and maybe some of you know, I'm a board attorney in a number of communities, represent towns, and, you know, you want to get the jurisdiction right always. So I inquire as to whether adequate notice is provided under Section 10, colon, 4, dash, 8 under the Open Public Meetings Act. I did also notice, and was also pointed out to me by a client representative, that the agenda description had changed at least a few times over the last couple of business days. And I believe it was not until literally yesterday morning, or maybe even this morning, whereby it was identified that this was going to be a public hearing for a, or courtesy review. So you have that, you have an issue as to the fact that the address of the property was not mentioned on the agenda. It doesn't mention on the agenda who owns, bless you, who owns the property, or what this Tat-like, Tatlock Field Courtesy Review, it's a public hearing, Tatlock Field Courtesy Review, what that necessarily entails, let alone the fact that it entails two lighting of two fields. The application materials, which I'll get to in a second, unlike other matters in hearings before this board, were not posted, at least to my knowledge, and I apologize if I'm wrong, on the municipal website. So we certainly didn't receive, you know, literally until yesterday morning, any, at least from my office, any notice about this particular hearing. I also, as some of you may know, I have not only corresponded with the city attorney regarding some of these matters regarding Tatlock Field as early as back in July of 2025, but I've also, on behalf of my client, filed a complaint in Superior Court relating to certain bond ordinance and related zoning, site plan, capital review, related issues that's pending. And despite any number of people knowing that I'm involved in this, I, just so the record's clear, did not receive the courtesy of any notice, heads up, anything about the fact that this matter was scheduled for tonight. Additionally, and I have a number of things to say, but I think I want to kind of break it up in courtesy to this board, just to make sure we're streamlining things. In term, and I just want to stick to notice and jurisdiction for a moment. So, you know, why do we provide notice? We provide notice so that the public has a full and fair opportunity to be informed of the nature of the matter that is going to be heard, so that they can not only come and appear, but that they have a full and fair opportunity to go to town hall, review whatever the application materials are that are on file, so that when they come to a public hearing, that they can intelligently participate in that public hearing, ask appropriate questions that are appropriate for them, based on the issues that are before the planning board in this case. So what was submitted here as part, as I found out today, as part of an application for this public hearing, was an advisory opinion submittal checklist, as well as a public agency application form. And I will respectfully contend, without pointing any fingers, that both the checklist, as well as the public agency application form, are respectfully woefully deficient in a number of respects. And again, this just goes to jurisdiction, providing the public a full and fair opportunity to be prepared, to participate meaningfully, intelligently, in a public hearing. So one of the first checklist item is, there's a submission of a complete submittal form. Well, we say that that's not accurate, because the, for example, there's no submission of DRO or Development Regulations Ordinance inconsistencies that are required in the application form. The description of the project is inaccurate, just for example, it says that it contemplates upgrading the lighting at upper Tatlock Field, which is, we contend, a mischaracterization of what's going on, actually, that there's three or four lights that are currently, that are not intended to be used to light practices and games, and they're only on the third of the field away from the houses on Butler Parkway. There's no submission, there's some calculations, but there is no submission at all as the basis for any of those calculations. Coverage calculations, setback calculations, it's all missing, it's not there. It's not shown on a plan, it's not shown on a zoning table, it's not otherwise verified in the application materials. And there's statements contained in there without any support. The plans that were submitted were respectfully fuzzy and vague. You couldn't read, I couldn't read one number, one letter on those plans. Those plans did not contain, and then if you go to the actual checklist, there was no survey submitted, there was no submission, which was required, this is just checklist items. Submission of proposed circulation, signage, drainage, landscaping, fencing, lighting, including any photometrics, grading, and other features such as parking and other proposed improvements for not one but two fields, none of that's included. Nothing. No elevations of any of these light poles or stanchions that are proposed here. There's no, and these are just, these are not my opinion. These are on the form, right? For purposes of complete application under Section 10.3 of the Municipal Land Use Law, and to allow an applicant, even the City of Summit, to fully and fairly come before a land use board such as this planning board. There's no submission of an area map with any graphic scale, block, or lot information or zoning information. All of that is required on the checklist. There's also a requirement for a key map showing the entire There's also a requirement for a key map showing the entire development. What is shown is a tax map, an aerial that appears to be coming from Google, a one-page Musco equipment layout map that is respectfully, and you can tell me I'm wrong, completely illegible. So, again, those are just matters that go to whether this, we contend, whether this board can hear, can conduct a public hearing with regard to this courtesy review. Number one, we talk about the notice under the Open Public Meetings Act. And then number two, what's the notice intended to do? Is to allow you to go and give you information so that you can learn about the project that is being presented in that public hearing. And we contend that it's not even close in terms of providing the information that is required to even commence this hearing. So, I'm gonna, you know, I have many other things to say about the nature of capital review and what that means for purposes of this project, but I'm gonna maybe take a little bit of a pause unless the board wishes that I continue. I sense that you do not. And I'd be respectful, of course, and so I will back up.
Thank you for your courtesy. And I suspect we'll hear from you again, so we'll continue this conversation. Steve, do you have any opinion on what Mr. Simon issued?
Well, before that, I actually had a question for Mr. Simon. Mr. Simon, is it your contention that, well, what specifically is your contention with respect to the public notice for this meeting? For example, it's my understanding that was sent to the official newspaper in a timely fashion. Do you contest that?
I do. I mean, I checked, Mr. Warner, you know what I do. I went on New Jersey public, I went on New Jersey public notices, like I do for all applications and any type of public hearing. I checked to see if there was any notice of a special meeting. I did not see any, and if I'm wrong, I'm wrong, but I didn't see any notice of any type of special meeting that was noticed to the public.
Is it your contention that it must be published by the newspaper? Or is sending it to the newspaper for publication for a special agenda for an open public meeting sufficient, in your opinion?
My opinion that it needs to be published because the whole point of the Open Public Meetings Act, and I'll quote it, is the reason why you send it to the newspapers, because they have the greatest likelihood of informing the public within the area jurisdiction of the public body of such meetings, one of which will be the official newspaper, et cetera, et cetera.
Is it your contention that, notwithstanding what you just quoted?
Because otherwise, Mr. Warner, there's no notice, right? And it's not that, so the public did not receive because there's no requirement of any notice, which I contended, under Section 12 of the municipal land use law. That is why adherence to Section 10, colon, four, dash, eight is important for matters like this so that the public has, you know, I'm gonna use the vernacular fighting chance in terms of participating meaningfully in a public hearing.
And is it your contention that an open public meeting cannot be conducted if it is, if the notice is sent in a timely fashion for publication, but if the official newspaper does not publish it in a timely fashion?
Yes, for this type of matter, I, yes, I agree.
And on what do you rely? What statutory or case law authority do you rely that this would be distinguished from any other business of a board on a special, a special agenda for an open public meeting, other than the fact that if there were a land development hearing, there would have to be separate notices, of course, under Section 10 and 12 of the MOUL.
Yep. It's statutorily required.
Which?
To newspapers, okay? And the fact that there's no public notice for this hearing that's published. We're not talking 10 days prior. We're talking at all. Check, I checked today, just to double, because it's when I found out about it. Checked today, and it wasn't there.
Can you cite for me from the statutory authority you're referring to what requires that the newspaper publish the notice in order for a courtesy review to take place as opposed to, in this hypothetical, the notice being timely sent and perhaps not published in this hypothetical?
Am I aware of any case law on point in terms of courtesy review public hearing? I said 10, colon, four, dash, eight.
Right, 10, colon, four, dash, eight.
And can you? And its progeny in terms of those other statutes in some of the open public meetings.
Okay. And can you read 10, colon, four, dash, eight if you don't mind?
Yeah.
If you have it.
Yep. Mail, telephone, telegrammed, or hand-delivered to at least two newspapers, which newspapers shall be designated by the public body to receive such notices because they have the greatest likelihood of informing the public within the area of jurisdiction of the public body of such meetings, one of which shall be the official newspaper.
Right, right, delivered to the newspaper?
Yes.
It doesn't say anything therein about the newspapers having to have published them in a timely fashion as far as what the municipality's obligation is, correct?
I believe that the municipality needs to ensure that the publication takes place at least 48 hours prior to the hearing. It's just two days.
You're saying it has to be, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Did you say it had, it has to be published by the newspaper?
Means written, written, advanced notice of at least 48 hours, given, giving the time, date, location, and I'm reading from 10, colon, four, dash, eight, I think, D, under the definition of adequate notice, and to the extent known, the agenda of any regular, special, or rescheduled meeting, which notice shall accurately state whether formal action may or not be taken. And I don't know, because there was no notice that I saw. And again, if you can demonstrate it, I stand down on it. I'm not trying to, you know, be difficult, just trying to protect.
We want to hear your position in its entirety, hence, hence my asking you the questions to clarify your position.
Correct. So, that's, that's the notice in terms of the newspaper notice.
I understand.
The, the notice in terms of the public, the agenda notice, as I stated, was that, my understanding is that it wasn't until maybe yesterday, if not this morning, that the agenda was changed to identify, which is less than 48 hours, that a public hearing was going to take place regarding Tatlock Field Lighting Project Courtesy Review. And I believe that until yesterday, it was called consistency review, which is not accurate because it's not an ordinance that you're, as you appropriately stated, checking for consistency review.
If I may, on that subject, you would agree, would you not, that the fact that it is listed on the agenda under public hearing, not under other business or, you know, master plan consistency reviews, which are not public hearings, but under public hearing, you would agree that that's an appropriate location on the agenda, correct?
Today it is, but yesterday, yesterday it was not.
I believe the, under the agenda, it was always listed under the public hearing column, number one. But number two, also, you would agree, would you not, that a courtesy review is primarily focused on pursuant to Section 31A, the consistency with the master plan? That's a primary obligation of the board to look into in the context of a courtesy review, correct?
A, it doesn't, well, A. It doesn't reference Section 31A in municipal land use law. I'm looking at the agenda.
No, but I'm saying Section 31A.
That's not.
Courtesy reviews focus on consistency reviews, correct?
I'll, I'll break it down.
I'm breaking it down, Mr. Simon. Courtesy reviews, courtesy reviews involve consistency reviews, correct? Involve master plan consistency, correct?
The specific language. In section, and I'm going to get to this a little later, but since you raise it, it does not talk about consistency. What it states is, and I'm reading Section 31, refer the action to the planning board, and I'm reading verbatim, for review and recommendation in conjunction with such master plan, okay? The public doesn't know, I know admittedly, but the public doesn't know what is meant by a courtesy review in what context, pursuant to what statute, for what purpose. Number two, it does not say consistency in Section 31 anywhere as opposed to Section 26 in municipal land use law that talks about inconsistency. And this board just a few moments ago said that a certain ordinance was not inconsistent with the master plan in terms of the historic ordinance. So, and furthermore, the Tatlock Field Lighting Project Consistency Review, as it was stated in the, on the agenda, was listed not as a public hearing until today, but rather under new business. So, it did not indicate on the agenda that the review was intended to be a public hearing.
My, just, my understanding is that it was always listed under public hearing. My underst, and beyond that, my understanding is that it always and currently refers to it as the Tatlock Field Lighting Project, not an ordinance like the Morris Broad Crossroads Ordinance or the Historic Preservation Ordinance, but the Tatlock Field Lighting Project, a project, not an ordinance, and that it was under public hearing. So, I understand your contentions with respect to the agenda description. Candidly, I don't find it compelling, that, that particular contention. It's not for me to find anything, it's for me to advise. So, when I say I don't find it compelling, I'm signaling where my advice may go, may go. But, but beyond that, we've probably beaten that one a bit. Do you have any other objections with respect to the notice for jurisdictional purposes other than the publication and the, and the content of the agenda?
No. I believe that I addressed, just in terms of pure notice, I think I addressed what I intended to. And again, the purpose of this is to, as an officer of the court, identify these things for the board.
Mr., actually, I have a question. Is there any case law on this?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Is there any case law on this?
Is there any case law on this?
Is there any case law on this?
First of all, in fairness, I should have the chair.
Sorry.
Recognize your question, it's not my job. It's okay.
That's okay. To the extent that that question is relevant, or you can.
I'm, I, I know there is case law on it because I just found out about this literally yesterday. I have not, in all fairness, had an opportunity to, to do any review of applicable case law, but I felt again that, and I believe that all of the contentions that I've raised here have merit and are appropriate, frankly, to advise the board of our position on it. If the board wanted me to brief it, of course I would.
And if I may, your, what would your contention be if, I know 45 days since the introduction, well, since the referral has not taken place, but what would be your contention if 45 days since the referral took place expired, that period of time expired without the board having had an opportunity or having conducted, for whatever reason, a courtesy review? What would be the result, in your opinion?
My legal opinion is that the board, that the board clearly intended to conduct a public hearing as a courtesy review. Whether that's right or wrong, I don't doubt the intention because you're here, right? Instead of home, doing other things. So, that I, that I agree with, that there's an, there's an intention to conduct this hearing. Because the hearing, in our respectful opinion, cannot be conducted because of errors, not to point fingers at anyone, just, things happen all the time. They happen in my office every day, that because of that, that there should be a rescheduling of this hearing, properly noticed, properly put on the agenda, and that the, in this case, the, the city of Summit, because of the error, should not, and the intention to have a public hearing as a courtesy review, should, the project should not proceed until after that hearing is rescheduled. If you take in contention that Section 31 is applicable here, which we'll get to later.
Okay. The, and you may have another question from a board member.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. LaJoy, you're recognized.
I apologize for not directing my question through you.
That's okay.
When was this referral first received by the board? Do we know?
I don't, I don't have that immediately on my hands, but.
Yes. We'll discuss that.
Well, I'm sorry, we should just make sure, maybe from our clerk or our, or Augusta or our board secretary, whoever would have that information, to make sure it's an accurate answer coming from the appropriate official.
I believe the statute requires that the referral come from the governing body, correct? So, I'm curious as to that because if we don't act within 45 days from the referral date, then it's moot.
Correct. Well, I wouldn't say it's moot. The opinion may be that we have a 45-day period within which to conduct a courtesy review, and if one, if that period expires without doing so, I don't believe the governing, I believe the governing body can proceed with the public expenditure. So, because our 45-day referral opportunity would have expired.
So, I'm trying to get a handle on.
No, it's a good question as to when it started.
So, can I chime in just for a second?
It's up to the chair.
Absolutely, thank you.
So, what I do have in terms of my comments as to the public agency submittal to the planning board, that's dated August 27, 2025.
I'm sorry, 27th?
August 28. It says 8/27/25.
We can hopefully double check that.
So, that's 12 days ago.
Okay. I think there's any number of matters of law for the board to discuss with our counsel.
What I'm, with the chair's permission, Augusta can continue to check that. There's no further inquiries from the board at this time of Mr. Simon. I think it would be not only appropriate, but prudent for us to go into executive session since there is pending litigation so that I can advise the board accordingly. litigation, so that I can advise the board accordingly with respect to the objections that have been raised and the impacts thereof. And so for that reason, and I usually have a resolution, I'm sorry, did you, you could, you could sit as far as I'm concerned. They, I would normally read a resolution, I don't have it handy, but I can certainly from memory do the material points.
Please.
So what I would ask is for a motion and a second, and a roll call vote to go into executive session for purposes of the Open Public Meetings Act exemption under 12B7 for threatened or actual litigation, or attorney, and I'm paraphrasing, attorney-client privileged communications to be made in order that the attorney may abide by his obligation, his or her obligation, to provide attorney-client advice to the board. It's one of the explicit exemptions to the Open Public Meetings Act, permitting us to go into an executive or closed session, for me to provide that legal advice to the board based on the information I've just been provided, and then after which we would come out, that minutes will be taken of the executive session, and the results in the minutes of that executive session ultimately will be made available when the reasons for maintaining the confidentiality no longer exist. I'm doing what I would grade as about a C, C+ on paraphrasing the statute from memory, but those are the material terms of a resolution to go into executive session. So with that, and as always, the board's chairman's permission, we should have a motion and a second, a roll call vote to go into executive.
We have a motion to enter into executive session.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And a roll call vote, Jessica, if you can.
Chairman Spur?
Yes.
Mayor Feigen?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Ms. Bowen?
Yes.
Mr. Donosa?
Yes.
Mr. LaJoy?
Yes.
Mr. Sala?
Yes.
Okay, all right. We're gonna ask the public to exit the council chambers temporarily.
Is that how we're gonna do it?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, Jessica, is there a room available?
We could go in the council, we can go back here, if we'd rather. Is that easier? Have everybody else stay put?
I don't know if there's a room available. I don't want to speak.
Yeah, we can use the council conference.
We would have to kill all the, we would have to turn off all the.
Audiovisual.
Audio, right.
And then put it back on again after.
Correct.
So hopefully someone other than myself does, because I don't have that. I'm an attorney, I shouldn't touch anything.
We have, we have someone watching.
There's a guy, there's a guy behind the curtain.
We'll be shutting down the stream for now, and just confirm that we are in executive session.
You want to turn off the stream, is that it?
We're gonna blackout the stream and the audio for executive session, and then we will return into an open session.
So we have, no one should be able to see or hear anything being discussed in this closed session amongst this board.
Then I have, then I have to completely stop the stream. I can't just like turn off the cameras, but.
Are you able to then turn it back on again when we go back into open public session?
Yeah.
Okay, if it's not too much trouble, that looks like what we're gonna have to do.
Okay.
And, and that includes, yeah, this is only for the board members and the board professionals. City solicitor can stay, because.